Questions and share insights on committee of the whole agenda items as they are being considered by the school board. Please raise your hand to be recognized by the board president. You are asked to come to the microphone so that everyone can hear your question or idea. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the agenda item being considered. Can I have a roll call, please, Jessie?
President.
Here.
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 And Mr. Johnson is excused for this evening. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. We're moving on to the presentation portion of tonight's meeting. And first item is student staff and community recognition. All right. Dr. Hazlen? Okay. Okay. All right. Okay, so if I can have Mrs. Geisringen up, please. And then she is the administrator recommendation here. I want to thank the following staff at Spooner Middle School for their collaborative efforts to keep the school open without a closure by giving up their planning periods to cover for the colleague. They have gone above and beyond these here to support each other and to ensure students had a safe, supportive learning environment where students could continue to get the learning opportunities that they deserve. And if you bear with me, I'm going to read the list here. Starting out with Sarah Byer, Amy Young, Megan Grimm, Ryan Smith, Carrie Bush, Lisa Thummel, Tammy Ackerson, Michelle O'Connell, Andy Rappel, Lindsay Mulligan, Dan Rosenbusch, Melanie Reed, Danine Burkett, Teresa Pufall, Mindy Greibos, Natalie Scheel, Wendy Miller, Huddy Walstrom, Michelle Cobbey, Kim Hanson, Josh Tisher, Ryan McKinney, Brian Amies, Amanda Buck, Melissa Smith, and Johnna Klein. Thank you very much. Round of applause. Next up, Administrator Mr. Hawke, if you would come forward. We are recognizing Deanna Peterson. Deanna is an extremely knowledgeable and hardworking person. She has been instrumental with implementing Compass Care, which handles our streamlined tasks for special education teachers. She continues to provide great feedback to staff regarding documentation and plans to make sure we are providing the best services possible. She is truly a great asset for the district. Round of applause, please. And next up, Mr. Scherz, if you would come forward. And we are recognizing Josh Fiesel. If you would come forward, please. Josh has willingly stepped in for Mr. Lucius and taken care of our athletic needs for all fall sports during Mr. Lucius's absence. He has worked under the radar to make sure our coaches and players have everything they need during the postseason as well as continuing to maintain a high level of his own program. Thank you, Coach Fiesel, for caring for all of our students and going the extra mile during these difficult times. Round of applause, please. All right. And then Mr. Berghammer, if you would come forward. And we are recognizing Jessie Rabadi and Dawn Wacek? Is that right? Wasek, sorry. If you would come forward, please. Jessie and Dawn are very helpful to students, staff, parents, and myself. They answer all questions and calls professionally, respectfully, and happily. Personally, these two ladies have done a wonderful job of assisting me in my new role and obviously have done a great job in transitioning into their new roles. Working in the elementary office, they are involved in many tasks and wear many hats. They do such a great job of juggling it all with such a positive and friendly demeanor. I really appreciate these ladies for all they do, and I am very confident our entire staff is also very appreciative. Thank you for being such a huge part in what we do at SES. Round of applause, please. All right. I think that's it. All right. All right. And we're going to move on to item B, the referendum project update. Mr. Conkle.
Good evening. Like to provide a brief update on the ongoing construction projects. Starting over at the elementary for the dehumanification system. We'll be doing some commissioning work this fall as well as next spring to make sure everything is installed properly. But as of now, it is fully functioning outside of the addition. Flooring replacement, we had a bit of a hiccup with a delay in material order early in October. Do have one classroom left that is still concrete. That's going to be scheduled to be completed the week of Thanksgiving. Also, four other office areas that will be floored as well. So by the end of Thanksgiving, we'll have 100% of the rooms that were expected to be floored completed. For the north parking lot, we decided to move forward with finish course at the patch. That work is complete, so no additional asphalt needs to be taken place at the elementary school. For the addition, all structural steel is set outside of a small canopy near the main entry. Looking at having roofing start this week, composite wall panels, looking at starting to get concrete slabs in the next couple of weeks. And we expect to have the building envelope fully enclosed in the next few weeks. Bleachers, those were installed mid-October. No issues there. And so now the bleacher contractor is fully complete with their scope of work. Playground equipment, worked with staff today to work on purchasing some additional equipment. We also did receive a grant on some larger pieces of equipment that were 50, one-for-one, basically. So we got 50% off on that equipment. It was accepted. Some additional scope was providing water to the elementary school maintenance garage. All the exterior underground work has been completed. Tomorrow, there'll be saw cutting within the building and then starting that underground plumbing this week as well. Any questions on the elementary school? For the middle school, starting with the addition there, have worked out all issues with the structural engineer. We do have a hold on one critical piece of structural steel that we're expecting to get that this week. Otherwise, foundations are up, underground plumbing is complete, and those foundations have been backfilled as well. Once we are able to get that beam, it should go up very quick. We did lose Masons to another job. Starting last Monday, they'll be back on site tomorrow, and their main focus will be the middle school moving forward. Anthols, gym flooring replacement, that has been completed. Bleachers completed as well. Furring out the walls, we have all steel studs and high-impact drywall installed. Starting the weekend prior to Thanksgiving, they'll be working on taping and painting those walls. Anthols, gym snow guards, those have all been installed as well. And then lastly, looking to make a purchase on the playground equipment that'll be installed next summer. Any questions on the middle school?
No.
And for the high school, the generator has been connected to the building now. With the manufacturer rep, we are looking at a December start-up date. But otherwise, all electrical work has been done. We did have an issue hitting an irrigation line that has been repaired. Looking to get the earthwork crew back on site this week, installing bollards this week, and then scheduling for fencing and asphalt in that area. We're at a point now where landscaping is going to, you know, placing seed is going to have to take place next spring. But otherwise, all of the work will be complete. And then lastly, with some additional scope, but we went and installed door alerts throughout the entire facility. That scope of work is also complete. Any questions?
Any questions? No? Okay, thank you. All right. We are going to receive and place that information on file. And then item C, update from the district nurse. I believe all of you received her information via Board Docs. Is there any questions? Okay, we're going to receive and place that information on file as well. Item D is the district-wide operational update. Dr. Hazlen?
Yeah, so a much better update to give you than the one that was provided a month ago. At this point, you know, we have two district staff members out. They're both high school staff members. And that is it in terms of staff out for COVID. I think if you look at Sarah Hamilton's report, I listed four active cases. She listed five. Hers is more current data. And you have a tally of our positive cases, student and staff to date. Just one piece that I did not include that I thought I'd update you on. To date, we've had one potential teacher sub start the paperwork to become a sub here. And we've had one additional individual that is retired teacher that reached out just to see what the process was. So no new subs yet, but a couple hopefully in the pipeline here. So that's it. Questions, me.
Any questions? Nope. Okay, thank you. We'll receive and place that information on file as well. All right. And then we're moving on to item E. Discuss the commissioning agent testing, balancing, inter-quality upgrades, and high school auditorium audio and lighting update. Mr. Conkle.
So we're at a place in the project now where we're very comfortable with the amount of contingency we're covering. It's, I think it's definitely time to start moving forward and looking at wish list projects. These were kind of the, some of the first ones that have popped up that we haven't addressed yet, starting with bipolar ionization. Havit broke out that information for you guys per school, but we're like, we're looking at a lump sum of $560,500 for the entire district. And I'll kind of go through the numbers now, and I know some of this terminology may be new, so I'll be happy to clarify if needed. Looking at the elementary school, north and south parking lots, it's starting to get in pretty rough condition. So it's a number to consider. It's a 2,000 exceed of 1.2 million for full replacements of those parking lots. For high school commissioning, trying to work out a few thermal comfort issues in some rooms and in some extreme weather conditions, that would be a 2,000 exceed of $8,000. Full facility testing and balancing, we have for the middle school and elementary 130,000 2,000 exceed. And just to understand, for that 2,000 exceed number, we do have testing and balancing covered for the actual work that's taking place in those facilities. Looking at the high school auditorium lighting, lighting controls, audio and video upgrades, that is a lump sum of $681,792.07. And to back up really quick, just so you are aware, a portion of the bipolar ionization is covered with, I believe, round two of the ESER grant.
So the question I have is, if we, and forgive me if I don't know what I'm talking about here. But what I'm asking is, once this indoor air quality upgrade comes in, what is the maintenance cost going to be on a per-year basis after that? Is that just like our heating and cooling, or?
So on the energy side of things, you will see a savings there. The district's running a little more outside air just to try and keep as clean as possible. Right now, you can go down to the minimum code requirement of, it depends on what area you're looking at. Normal classroom would be three air changes per hour. And so you can recapture those energy savings. The energy savings will definitely outlast the maintenance cost. If you'd like more information on that, we can certainly get it to you by the board meeting.
And if I remember correctly, some increased maintenance costs with additional filtering and more substantial filters and things of that nature, correct?
So we would be looking at a different, a higher MERV filter rating with that system. So that's largely the maintenance costs outside of the components themselves needing to be scheduled to be replaced out of their lifecycle. I don't have those exact costs on hand, but my understanding is the energy savings would offset those maintenance costs.
Okay. Is there any other questions for Mr. Conkle?
So Brad, just to get some clarification, tonight, you're just bringing these forward as projects for the board to consider?
Correct. So just want to present this information now and then give you the opportunity to vote during the actual board meeting. And then if you did want any information in between, be more than happy to supply that.
Okay. Go ahead, Tess.
The decision would be on all of these, some of these, and that has to be in two weeks? Or is it that we go through and see where we are with?
I think I would leave that up to you to decide.
Okay.
Well, we'll probably need a little additional information about money available contingency-wise, at least the projection at this point.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Contingency, like, is it already planned, or because something is under budget, have the funds available? That's what I was?
Okay.
I don't have those exact numbers on hand. It is significant. We do feel very confident that we can move forward with this and still carry enough contingency for things like temporary heating as we tie into the buildings, especially over at the middle school, and underground work as well, which are our main concerns right now for carrying contingency. And then also being able to do additional wish list projects. But I think we'll have that number available for you tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. And then can you tell us to the life expectancy, if we decide that we wouldn't do those parking lots, what we would be looking at as far as when we would have to redo them anyway?
So right now, it's, they are currently scheduled to be seal-coated and crack-filled. This would likely be your last cycle of being able to do that without replacing.
Okay.
The north lot's in worse condition right now than the south lot, but knowing that, buses are going to be moving down to the south lot. So that will get tore up a lot quicker down there.
Okay.
And this way would be, you know, one replacement, so you wouldn't have to keep on doing patches down the road for maintenance purposes.
And if we did that, then that money that would be allocated for that patching and would go towards that?
Absolutely. There would be a credit realized on top of this 2,000 exceed number. And this is a very conservative estimate.
Okay.
Brad, just one more question here from me, and that is, in the contingencies you talked about optimizing the HVAC system, like we know will happen at the elementary and middle, where more significant work has gone on. So that's something additional that we're looking at as a, just in an effort to make sure it's optimized here like it will be in the other two buildings?
That's exactly correct. So commissioning is basically looking to make sure everything's installed, you know, correctly. More often than not, in almost every single time, they will find items that are not installed correctly. And that could alleviate the issues with some thermal comfort problems.
And as I understand it, they'd make the changes, but they'd also do some training of our staff to sustain that in the future, then?
That is correct.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Conkle? Okay, do I have consensus to move this forward to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. All right. So we're going to move on to item F. Discuss the reading of emails and anonymous letters at board meetings. And I'll open this up for discussion.
I ask that this be put on the agenda. I think they're two separate issues, but the reading of emails at board meetings for comments, I think I've been on the board for almost seven years or seven years counting, and we have never made a practice to read emails at school board meetings. I mean, I get many emails, many people ask me to read them, but we have not done that. If we make that a practice, we could be here for long hours of the night. And so what I'm asking is that, that we don't, if it's a comment that are meant for the community comments or comments, that they should be people who are present. I want to make it clear that any staff person that wants to talk to me, and I'm sure the rest of the board are open to hear, talk, listen, emails, whatever it is, I want to hear what people have to say. So that's not the issue. The issue is if we start that process, we'd be here for, on controversial issues for a very long time. So that was the one, the one issue. The issue of anonymous letters is, I feel, is not a professional thing to do and lacks discretion. I know if I write a letter to the advocate and I don't put my name and address to it, it won't get printed. Can you confirm that? So what happens with anonymous letters, you can put whatever you want in there. You can't verify it. You don't know if it's factual. You can say all sorts of things. And I just don't think it's appropriate for a school board meeting, for community comments, for all of that. It's not that I'm not interested, or the board's not interested in hearing those things. It's just not a practice that I think is healthy. And mostly because you cannot verify any of what is said in those anonymous emails. Now, if it's an anonymous gift or anonymous thing like something to that, that I get. But not anonymous on difficult subjects that we face. So that is my concern about reading emails as community comments, and very concerned that we'd read an anonymous letter at a school board meeting. I just think that was not appropriate. Thanks.
Is there any other further comments regarding those two items?
Is there in our policy on community comments? We don't, I couldn't find a policy that addressed?
I don't think there's been a policy from what I understand. I haven't looked for that. But I think it's just been a understanding that we have not done that. And I think it goes, that practice goes way beyond the time I've been on the board as well. It's just we haven't done that. If somebody wants me to read their emails, there's just no way. We, I mean, you have people who show up here, then why would people show up? We could be reading emails for hours. And I don't feel like that is a healthy practice. But if we're open to that, that is, if that's what we want as a board, that's fine. Then we can, then we can be reading emails. Then we can extend our community comments to read those emails. That could take away potentially from the people who are here to speak in person. So I'm open to it. I just, I mean, I just feel like that could be a, that's opening a can of worms, in my opinion.
And I think, I guess I think the, with this particular subject as you're speaking to, that was an agenda item for me to read those emails. And so, and those were concerned staff members that didn't feel, because of the volatile situation, they could be there. They did reference that they were from one of the buildings. And so I guess I don't think that this is talking about a common practice to emails that don't pertain to subjects. I think it was a one-time or a limited practice that we were doing. So I'm, I don't believe that the way you're stating it, it is, it would be a common practice.
Which part are you talking about? The anonymous email or the email?
It's kind of both, because?
Well, again, anonymous emails aren't professional. You cannot verify it. You can say how bad certain people are or whatever, they disagree. You cannot verify. Most of the school feels this way. That is not appropriate in a school board meeting.
The one email was signed, Mr. Milton.
That's why I asked which one. And you said both. And so I'm, I am addressing the anonymous letter.
Okay. The anonymous letter, I understand. The email, the email, the one email I read was signed by a staff member.
Again, we've not made that as a practice. Then we need to open that up for all staff who feel differently, for that, for any school board member to put that on the agenda. Even this issue took a month to get on the agenda for me to even discuss it.
I do have a question, though, because now we're going to have to, I feel like we're going to have to have some specific guidelines with just not us reading emails, but someone coming for the community comments, reading something for somebody else. So that happened at that meeting where people could not be present. And so how can we verify that that person truly felt those things? So then we're going to have to stipulate that you must be present, it must be your comments, and you cannot comment over someone else. That's my concern as well. Because that did happen several times, and we allowed that. So it's sort of the same gray area that I feel like we would have to address that going forward.
And we could, and we could address it as it not to happen again, which could very well be as well.
Yeah.
Whatever that this group will, would like to decide.
And I do agree with you. That's the can of worms that we opened up.
Yep.
So you couldn't stop a community member to not do that because we already can't open the can of worms. And so I just ask that we would consider not doing that anymore.
Okay.
Or if we do, I guess my question is, if we read one, we have to read all of them that we got? And we got a ton.
It sounds like we're talking maybe about two different things. So the community comments section, maybe we need to clarify, must be present, yes, only for yourself. This was an agenda item.
And I believe that these were sent directly to you, Dr. Hazlen. Is that correct?
I don't believe it was on the agenda, to be honest.
Okay. All right. Then yes, we'd have to clarify exactly as to how we want to handle that.
I know we took some time a year or so ago to clarify our community comment language.
Yep, yep.
Need to revisit that language. Sure that it's clear.
Yep. So would someone like to?
So is the next step to?
Review it?
To review the policy, state the language?
Yeah, I make a motion to review the community comments section and to review that policy. A second.
I would say, though, it's, we really didn't have that problem from the community coming here. That's really a problem first coming from the board. We need to address the board allowing that. And then the community comments, the same. They are slightly different. I don't mind. I think we need to address both of those things.
Which can be addressed in the policy.
That's fine.
Do we have a current policy as to that?
True.
Okay. All right.
We will include that with the policy updates that'll come to you next.
Great.
All right.
Okay. Is everybody, we have consensus to move that forward, then? And that will be, that will be at the Committee of the Whole in December, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Milton?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Then we will, we will do that. And we will move on then to item G, which is review and certify the written evaluations of the school safety drills as required by Wisconsin Act 143. And if, if you guys, administrators don't mind, I'd like to call you up and just give us a brief overview of your drills so that we may take action on that item tonight. Okay? So we'll start with Mr. Berghammer.
We did a evacuation drill. We had headed down to the church. Boy, this is a little while ago now. I'm trying to put my memory back together.
That's all right.
Yeah, so I believe it was at nine o'clock in the morning, we had an evacuation. So we had, it was just a regular evacuation, just a test drill. So all the teachers led the classrooms out of the building, headed down to the church. We did allow our 3K and 4K classrooms to stop at the Rails Rock, which would be about a midpoint, just for the sake of the drill. a midpoint, just for the sake of the drill. Everything went smooth. We did have Mrs. Bitney and Mrs. McKinney checking out at the Rails Rock to make sure everybody was accounted for there. Mr. Volz and myself made sure everybody was accounted for down at the church. And then we just took care of the InformaCast, and everything was clear when everybody was accounted for, and everything went really smooth.
Okay, so you didn't find anything that was a concern at that time?
Nope.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Burghammer? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. You're next, Mrs. Geesringen.
So we had our drill. Oh, geez. Wow, there we go. Sounds like in Karaoke or something. So we did our drill. It's been a while, too. So October 12th, we had Spooner PD present, we had Dr. Aslan present. So we also had Washburn County, Derek Olson was present for our drill. Prior to that, on our October in-service, we did tabletop activities with our staff in all three buildings. We kind of went through our scenarios and just kind of what if, what if this happened? How would we handle this? We went through our InformaCast app with new staff and anyone else present. We had kitchen staff, custodial staff present during that October in-service, so that we were all on the same page, and then went through the actual drill with the students and the staff present. Mock intruder, so talked about, there's an intruder coming in through this scenario, you know, having the kids then pretend or practice like what, what would they do? Lockdown. Typically, because we're three stories, that top floor tends to lock down, and then gave them a chance to evacuate. So we did evacuate eventually for all the students. And then practicing going past police officers, that's always been kind of a thing, is making sure our hands are up and making sure we're not, so the police are aware. Kids did amazing, staff did amazing. We checked in, everybody was there. We did have some glitches, of course, with construction. As I said in my report, communication needs to be addressed on the playground because on that side there's construction happening, that speaker isn't working. We had staged it, so I had had students and staff out on that side.
Okay.
Just for, because we wanted to test out our communication system, because that's part of your objective, and yep, it didn't work. And he was aware of it, so we're addressing that to temporarily get something up so that we have some temporary speakers on that side. InformaCast glitches and some phones, not sure why.
Okay.
Hugh did come over and he quickly helped address some of those. Still can't really figure that out. So that's something that we're just thinking about in the future, because cell towers, you just don't know in your connectivity. So that was one thing that we had. And then just afterwards, we always survey staff to find out what, what went well, did they, did they think of calling 911? And many of them did, which was a surprise. So empowering them to have that ability to say, it's okay, call 911. You can pull the fire alarm if you need to. Those are just some tactics and things that we talked about, debriefed with staff.
Great. Any questions?
Well, that's great.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Mr. Schers.
So when we do any of our drills, one of our focuses, our main focus is the idea of survival. And so we kind of, one of the things we do every term is we go through the education of that process, and we talk about scenarios, knowing that if there's something wherever to happen in this building, we have no idea what it's going to be. If we did, we'd prevent it. So what we try to do is make sure everyone has an understanding, first of all, what lockdown is, and what, with the, with the point of getting away from the threat. So our evacuation drills are usually run that way. We, we move from lockdown to evacuation based on circumstances. And everyone knows that they have a right to save their own lives, and that's the process that we go through when we talk about them. So our drill this year was very much along those guidelines, making sure everyone understands what we do and when to do it. And again, went very well. And as we look at it, we've been talking about some of the protocols that we have that we really need to look at, because I don't know if there's any perfect way to do an evacuation and reunification, but we've got to work towards that. And that's, I appreciate what the work Messy's done, it's been very thorough in that process, and I think we're in a better place as we move forward. And again, that's kind of our philosophy, and that's what we've been working with as we do these types of drills.
Great. Is there any questions for Mr. Schers? No. Thank you. Okay, so if there's no other questions, I would like a motion to certify the written evaluations as presented.
I make that motion, that we certified as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item H, discuss the appointment of board delegate and alternate delegate to the Wisconsin State Education Convention in January 19th through the 21st of 2022.
Have people who have indicated they're interested?
No, we have not. Yes, and so Mr. Johnson's not here this evening, but I would certainly nominate him to be the delegate. Because he, he has done that job before, and he has done a very, very good job at it. So I would, I would nominate Mr. Johnson.
Else who's interested? I'll second Paul Johnson.
Anybody else interested? Nope. All right. Then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will speak to Mr. Johnson about that when he returns from his yurt. So, all right. And, all right, we're moving on to item I, which is discuss the Niola Policy, Volume 30 Updates. This is...
Do we need an alternate?
Oh, do I need an alternate? Yes, I do, I need an alternate. Let's see. Who is all attending? Mrs. Jepson, correct? Myself? No, no Marsha this year?
And I'm leaving early.
And you're leaving early, yes. Okay. I will, I will take the...
There's wrestling.
If anybody, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I can take the role of the alternate in case Mr. Johnson cannot do that.
There's wrestling that Thursday night.
If you guys don't mind. If somebody would second that.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And again, I will connect with him on that, and we will, we will get that straightened out. Okay. So, again, I'm moving on to item I, which is discuss the Niola Policy, Volume 33, 30 Updates, Group One. You all got a group of policies and changes, so that we coincide with Niola. This is going to be the first group of three, I believe. And we will, we have a bunch of them. So at this point, did anybody have any questions regarding any of those changes? Yes?
Just wondering why two of the policies are listed between the discussion and the policy.
They're, they're not part of...
They're not part...
This is a, this is an update.
This is just an update. Mm-hmm. So...
So they're not, are they discussing their close sessions or are they...
Different.
Different matter. So we have two policies that we will be discussing in closed session.
When I look at statute, I can...
Mm-hmm.
...name by, which is a discussion of policy by a region that's in the form of...
I, I do not know that information.
Yep. So, you know, if you'll, you know, if you'll take a look again at that item under the executive session, it does, it does state a purpose. It's not a policy review, and it gives the statutory reference.
Are you saying that somebody on the board is going to be considered comfortable with the policy?
What I'm saying is it is not a policy review.
So you're saying that somebody on the board is going to be down to review the policy or something?
Again, we've listed an agenda item, and we've listed the statutory reference, and I, myself or anyone else is just not in a position to say anything beyond that at this time.
Okay, so we have a group of...
So I have a question on the policies.
Okay.
So on policy, jeepers, it's the, I don't know if it's 167.3, about public comments at board meetings. What I would like is to make sure, we've had a practice to say the name and the township. I would like to have the address be struck from this policy. I don't feel like it's, I feel like for people's safety, we should not have addresses on, that they need to give their address. Their, their township should be good enough, and I think it would be under C of public comments and, public comment section of the meeting.
Name and address of the participant.
Yeah, and I just think name and township should be, should be sufficient, as we have been practicing already.
I'm sorry, where, are you at 167.3? Is that right?
Agenda item number one.
Name and address of the participant, okay. So you just want name and address, you want name and township?
Name and municipality.
Yes, yes.
That's, that would be good.
Okay.
So I think it's on number C.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
And then that will be brought forward so that when we review that first reading at our regular board meeting, you will see that change. Correct.
That is correct.
Okay. Is there any other questions or about any of the other policies? Okay. Do we have consensus to move this forward to the regular board meeting for the first reading?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. And, all right, we're moving on to item J, which is review the Safe at School Plan Changes. Mr. Hopkey.
All right, good evening. So Sarah Hamilton and myself spent some time going over the Safe at School Plan practice and revision from the last meeting. And the intent was to, to make edits and changes based on the decision and discussion made. And what we have here is those updates for consideration. The first thing, I just wanted to highlight is, well, highlighted text, it's something that's added or amended, and then something that struck out as far as text, it's been deleted or removed. Okay? So getting into it, some of the changes, we talked about positive cases be excluded from school as directed by Washburn County Public Health. And what we talked about is symptomatic students will be excluded. Sorry, that was supposed to be struck out, that from school, 10 days from onset of symptoms. It was supposed to be excluded from school until 24 hours symptom-free. Okay? If they are tested for COVID-19 and are negative, they may return once symptoms have been resolved for 24 hours, and I want to discuss that a little later here. Okay? And just getting into it, regardless of vaccination, that both staff and students have the option to quarantine if they're a close contact. Isolation, exclusion, and contact tracing. So students and staff who are, are household contact will be notified by the county health department, and return to school or work dates will be provided by them. And then just, just an update, that's, you know, sports participation, that's truly based on the guidelines that have been identified previously. Okay? The exempt SkyAlert CD code, it's just the practice that we've been doing previously, but being more specific, if parents deem that they want to keep their kids out if they're close contact, it's exempt. It's exempt from being included in truancy determination. Okay?
Question. What, what's the difference between the WIA guidelines and the Heart of the North Conference? Between that and one and two?
Yeah. So we, we don't have any, say, in the WIA guidelines and Heart of the North determinations. That's what we had in there previously, and the only thing we, we changed is that early return, it's just that sports participation is going to be based on that.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Yep. And then close contacts, just doing the, the updates there, that classroom cohorts will be considered close contacts. All staff who are within that six feet of a positive case for 15 minutes or more will receive that SkyAlert, so staff and students will receive that. Middle school, mainly with the sixth and eighth grade, they have the seating plans, and then the fifth grade has the cohort model that they're following, so very much like the elementary as far as contact tracing. And then high school, just updating that students and staff sitting within that six feet will be considered a positive, within a positive case will be notified. So after, after taking a look at some of that, there were some items that we really wanted to get some clarification on, and one of them is that return after a negative test result. And just want to ask that question, you know, how, how are we going to handle students that are negative but symptomatic? And what I, what I have listed here was that Wisconsin DHS guidelines, it was very clear in say, in there saying they should remain home until 24 hours symptom-free. Not all symptoms, or I should say, some symptoms would fall under our previous practice of sending them home, if they've got a fever, if they're vomiting, or, you know, body, you know, some of those symptoms. And I, I don't know if we want to really get into mincing it here. I, I know there's some concerns as far as some of the symptoms and how we treat that. And I, and I know that in the past, you know, the health offices worked together with families to make that determination. So that's, that's one of the questions that we have.
Okay. Okay, so do we have, I'm going to open that up for discussion now at that point so that we can discuss, I mean, because in a normal situation, whether it's strep, or whether it's a cold, or whether it's the regular flu and not COVID, if you have a fever and you are sick, you should stay home, or if you have, you know, if you're determined that you don't have COVID, it's a negative test, but you are still sick, I would hope that your parent would keep you home. So, I mean, we have to have some determination as to whether, I mean, if you were in a normal circumstance with no COVID at all, if you came to school and you threw up, your parent was called and you went home. And so I think we should probably, at least, I would follow that guideline. Does anybody else have any discussion on that?
We've got that here, tested for COVID or negative, they may return once symptoms have been resolved for 24 hours.
For 24 hours.
I think that makes good...
Yeah. I, I know there was just some discussion with, you know, like with coughing and sniffles and whatnot, and like I said, we've had some other cases that we've worked through that with the family, so just want to make sure.
Because some things do... Because some things do mimic the same things, but they are not COVID. And so we have to kind of make sure that we look at that from both ends, you know, so that we're not just automatically throwing everything as to be COVID.
Jack. All right.
Does that make sense? Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to step up, if you would, please?
So, does this mean that the current policy is that the health office staff will work with parents if there's, for example, my youngest has had a cough from allergies for two months, and he was out sick the last half of last week with a cold, he got over the cold, but still had that cough, and I called the school, I said, I don't know what to do, he's perfectly fine, he's running around like a little Tarzan, but he still has his cough. So, I think I talked to Josie at the time, I don't remember her last name.
Sure.
And she said, well, technically, they're supposed to be 24 hours symptom-free, but, you know, with a cough, it's like, you know, so, so is that the current policy, that it's, it's, the health office will work with us then?
Yes.
That's what you're saying? I just wanted to clarify that I was understanding.
Absolutely. This is primarily how we would be following, it would be that 24 hours symptom-free, but we know that there's going to be some cases that just don't fall within that, so, just giving that leeway to make sure that we're.
They'll work with us, and, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, Roger that.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
So I'm only concerned with symptom-free, and maybe there needs to be a fever-free 24-hour?
Yes, that is definitely part of how we've operated prior to COVID, so, absolutely.
I think it should just be basically pre-COVID standards. If you were throwing up, you had a fever, it was just, that's what we're talking about. I mean, that's what I thought we passed.
And I did look back into, you know, policy and practice, and, you know, it's left fairly vague.
Yep.
Okay, so, that's where we're going off from this guidance, we're looking at that 24 hours, but knowing that we need to work with families on this.
I think that's great.
Okay. As far as COVID testing, I know that we've had the practice of testing some of our staff of recent this year, and we have that capability to do it with staff as well, doing the rapid test here, and then taking the sample for the PCR. And I'm just wondering, you know, how do you want to see this handled? You know, do we want to conduct that for students and staff prior to leaving, if requested, as well as scheduling symptomatic students and staff if out of the buildings with the onset, if that's requested?
I guess my question was, I thought at one point, our goal was to, or I thought we were having funding or something that we were going to go in that direction where people would have the ability, besides staff. I thought at one time we discussed staff and students, but I think logistically, we were.
Yeah, so we were able to work out the bugs, this is not something that would be at cost, and we've been able to work out staffing to help facilitate this with the vendor, with a, yeah, purveyor, who does the testing and whatnot, so we have that capability, it's just a matter of giving the nods, yes, we're going to follow through with that, so.
As long as staff can handle it, we have the ability, we have the resources.
Yeah, absolutely, and I know that that's been kind of a frustration, because we have that, and we just haven't moved forward, because we wanted to get, you know, we wanted to get your guys' backing and blessing on this matter, but yeah, we would definitely schedule it when we have that staff available for those out, for the people that are out of the school district for that testing. It's really easy to do it before they leave, but that scheduling piece would be very specific, and we have a program that we're able to do that scheduling and send out those reminders, so, I mean, we can handle it pretty, pretty easily based on our schedule.
Go ahead, Terry.
If I requested, do you mean consented? Because, like, if there were students or whatever involved?
So we would have to get the request, or correction, we would have to get that consent, but they would have to request it, and we can offer that consent, and we'll ask, I mean, if they want to follow through with that, so. The scheduling would definitely have to be requested, because they would have to go in and schedule it themselves, so. Okay?
Okay, so do we have consensus to do that, to do that testing and give those families that?
Option.
Option if they would like it?
No, I think that's something we definitely need to give them an option, and we'll encourage people to be tested, because I think that was an issue with parents, was their concern that there wasn't enough testing in the area, so therefore, I think it'll kind of help curb some issues down the road.
Okay. Okay. The last item, and I did leave the copy of the email there to help with some of the guidance here. So with probable positive cases, what we're talking about with probable positives are individuals that were a close contact and then became symptomatic within that 14 days. And what we talked about previously is that the language stated quarantine for 10 days after becoming symptomatic. And, you know, we followed that approved, what we're looking at is following the approved procedures for symptomatic students and staff from October 18th. And we are required to notify the health department, that is law, we just have to notify them that it's a probable case, and then they do the follow-up. One thing that we did get through that email, and it's towards the end, is just stating that exactly what we had talked about previously is that if you have a symptomatic person and they test negative, they would follow the same parameters that we've already indicated. Okay? So, there's truly no action on this, it's just more of that, providing that clarity when we have probable positive cases, what we have to do, and then the procedure that we would follow.
Yep, and then I believe that once we have this clear, you have this clarification, that we will be updating that.
We'll be updating the document, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hopkey.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Then, we're moving on to item K, which is discuss the temporary increase in substitute custodian pay. Dr. Aslan?
Yes, thank you. So, we have a challenge in another employee group, and that's custodians with substitutes, a little bit different than with teacher subs, as we've been discussing in previous weeks. What Ryan is reporting is that, you know, he has had a small handful of people come forward and say they'd be willing to be custodial subs, and then come once and don't come back. And so, the thought is a temporary revision to some language that we currently have, and again, to see if we would have greater success retaining custodial subs, because we really have been running bare-bones operation with so many staff out. So, what the, currently, a custodial sub, after 10 consecutive days of service, gets a pay increase to the long-term rate. What we'd propose through the end of June 2022 would be that it'd just be after 10 days, so not necessarily consecutive 10 days of service, and then look to elevate the pay for those substitutes.
Is there any questions for Dr. Aslan?
This curiosity gets me here, is there, does a sub come in and expect to know what to do, or are they trained?
No, they get some training, and they also get a, like a task list or a job sheet that they work off of.
That's my, I guess I would only assume that if you were set up with a job, you wouldn't come back, because you don't know what you're doing and you're set up to fail.
Right, I don't believe that to be the case.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Aslan? Okay, do I have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Terry?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. All right, and we're moving on to item L, the 30, 60, 90-day planning cycle, and of course, I'm assuming that all of you have read the 30, 60, 90-day planning cycle for each of the buildings and the district office. Is there any questions regarding that information? Okay, if there's any questions, we're going to receive and place that on file, and then we're moving on to item M, which is the financial update. Dr. Aslan?
Looking at the month of September, beginning balance, $8,142,792.62. As you can see, there were some receipts during that time, the largest one being one of our half dozen general aid payments that the district receives over the course of the year. Total amount available then was $8,241,530.43. When we look at expenditures, we had $5,523,725.24. Balance on hand at the end of September then, $2,717,805.19.
Are there any questions? All right, if there are no questions, we're going to receive and place that information on file, and then we're moving on to item N, which is the approval of the vouchers. Any questions? Okay, do we have consensus to move this to the regular board meeting as part of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, then we're moving to item 3, Discussion and Action. We are going to have an action item with these resignations and hirings this evening. Dr. Aslan?
Resignations, Adalell Bennett, her professional first-year service, Oliver Anklum, JV Boys Basketball Coach, five years of service, Jeremy Volz, Middle School Girls Basketball Coach, four years of service, Michelle O'Connell, Middle School Girls Basketball Coach, one year of service.
Do I have a motion to approve these resignations?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we want to thank you very much for your service to the district and hiring.
Jeremy Volz, Head Girls Basketball Coach, replacing Brian Amos, Mr. Lucius is the recommending administrator. Michelle O'Connell, JV Girls Basketball Coach, replacing Kristen Vick, recommended by Mr. Lucius. Andy Rappel, Assistant Girls Basketball Coach, that's a vacant position, recommended by Mr. Lucius. Sam Smith, Middle School Boys Basketball Coach, replacing Riley Hotchkiss, recommended by Mr. Lucius.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve these hirings?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for taking on these new roles. So, all right. So then, we are going to move to item 4, convening to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Parent 1, Parent C, to consider the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Could I have a motion to convene into closed session?
So moved.
Second?
I do want to protest number B on this agenda for the lack of information sent after being requested.
Duly noted.
Do we need a second? Do we, sorry?
Duly noted. Do I have, is there a second to convening to closed session?
Second.
Can I have a roll call vote, please, Jesse?
Yes. Can't agree or disagree, but will be present.
Can't agree or disagree, but I will be present.
Yes.
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 Okay. All right, we are back into open session at 7:10. And.
No action was taken during the closed session.
And can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.